There we go. All right. Thanks, everybody. Mayor Bonfoc, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you very much for your time this evening. I think we have about 20 minutes. We have about 15 minutes to go through the presentation. This is for the interpretive and informational directional signage.
Thank you.
For the riverfront park improvements on the river. And I'll introduce us. I'm Jason James with DHM Design. I know some or most of you for quite a while. We're landscape architects and planners here with Office on Main Street. And this is Saber, she's a designer in our office and very directly involved in the project. And so I'll start and then hand it over to Saber. And she's going to kind of walk us through a few of the slides of the presentation. We're going to try to save a few minutes at the end for questions and answers. We're really excited to be here. This part of the project, the interpretive signage, it's kind of the icing on the cake of a really big, important, major project. And important for the community and super important for us as a firm at DHM. We've been involved in the project since about 2018. We participated in the original ecological site analysis of the existing condition along that half mile stretch of river. And then we were able to participate in some of the community visioning and public outreach and conceptual design and planning, as well as the implementation as it's gone in the last year or so to completion. And I've been also fortunate to be able to take classes of students down and give them tours of the improvements and talk about all of the amazing partners and the wonderful things that have been done on that stretch of the river. I want to recognize, and I know this has been done before in front of the board, the amazing team of collaborators that we got to work with. This is the last step, but working with Read Out Construction and working with River Restoration, as well as Town Staff, Picken County Healthy Rivers and Streams, and of course, the Roaring Fork Conservancy. The level of collaboration amongst all of those team members is really what made the project a success. And it really set us up to be able to put together information, signage, interpretation of what's happened down there and what's going on and what's important with that section of the river in a very meaningful way. And we set out to do that in a way that was consistent with the original project goals that the community set forth. That's with a restoration focus, also with a light touch and the ability to educate and engage the community. And we also wanted to put together something that was unique to create an identity for the park and also had kind of a subtle character to it. We wanted the information to be clear and accessible to a variety of age ranges, a variety of language, and recognizing that we're, the entrance to the park is about a half mile from the front door of two of our schools, about three quarters of a mile from the front door of two other schools, miles of two other schools in the community. So walking distance for nearly every student in Carbondale down to this amazing point of access that really wasn't accessible before. The ability to get down into that space in a way that manages the impact to the very important environment, as well as provides the information, the learning about the processes of the river, about the context of the river, that the materials that we've put together in collaboration with the project team members, you can stand in the spot where you're looking at the sign and you're looking at the events or the context or the activities that are happening right in front of you. And so that's been very exciting to us in telling the story of the park. And so I'm going to hand it over to Saber before I take up all of the time. So we can kind of page through some of these. We're not going to talk specifically about the content. There's 16 of these and it would take us hours to kind of get through it all because we've spent a year putting this together and a huge amount of scientific feedback from the right experts have gone into this. So be happy to answer questions, but Saber's going to talk a little bit about the process and then I'm going to kind of page through some of these panels as we go.
Yeah, so I'm going to start by talking a little bit about our stakeholder group and some of the experts that we worked with in this process. So our core stakeholder team involved us at DHM, the town of Carbondale, Eric Brenlinger was our touch point there, River Restoration, the engineers, Roaring Fork Conservancy and Picken County Healthy Rivers. And so that core group met in person at our office about four times together over the past year, kind of at the end of each phase of the design process to really make sure everyone was on board, gather ideas and kind of push the design forward. And then throughout the process, we worked really closely with lots of content experts. We wanted to make sure that the information that we were putting on the signs was accurate and really relevant to our project site and to the surrounding context. And so a couple of those collaborator collaborators were Roaring Fork Audubon Society, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. We worked with other people in the town of Carbondale, like Scott Wedding on the ditch information. We really tried to source as much information from experts locally as possible. So moving into our design process, we broke this down into three main phases of design. So the first phase was programming and this was really research heavy for us. So we did a bunch of looking into precedent projects, looking at how other like families of signage work and how we could create a successful system of signage at the park that would be really engaging, help convey the rules and regulations of the park, but also convey information and educate the people that are using the park. We also looked at kind of general character of signs, materiality, how we make those materials fit into the context of our natural riverfront park. And then we launched into our conceptual design studies. And then we presented that all to our stakeholder group and moved forward into schematic design where we not only refined each panel, we selected content categories. We also in this phase started to talk about identity of the park. And so we developed a logo, a color palette and kind of our like brand, we were calling it for the park. And this was important to us to make this a unique experience in Carbondale. We don't have too many parks in Carbondale that have a whole family of signage, wanting all of them to really connect and tell the story as you move through the park. We received feedback and continued to gather information from experts and then moved into our design development and construction development. And so that's where we really narrowed down the designs of each individual panel, looking at how they would be installed and built and then choosing their final location on the site. So talking a little bit about the goals of our project, we really wanted to make sure that the goals of the signage aligned with the goals of the overall restoration project. And so like Jason mentioned, two of the biggest goals of the restoration project were to increase accessibility to the river and maintain a light touch down there. And so with our environmental graphics on these signs, we wanted to make sure that we were creating really exciting, interactive, engaging signs, but not distracting from the natural qualities of the park. So they're meant to kind of enhance the experience and not distract from it. And so we kind of had to balance like how, you know, colorful are graphics? Like, how do we make those feel really exciting, but not like too flashy in the park down by the river? And then another piece of that is we have an outdoor classroom on the site. And so that's meant to be used by all the students across the street. And so we concentrated our signage, our largest signs and the largest number of signs near the outdoor classroom. And then the way it works is it kind of becomes a more single track trail as you move down the park. And the signs become smaller and fewer in number as you move down so that the impact is less where the amount of human activity is also less. And then the, like I mentioned earlier, wanted to create a unique identity. So each sign contains the logo, the logo will be printed on the panel and then it'll also be etched into the metal base of the sign. So you know that each sign is kind of a part of this bigger picture. And then as Jason is flipping through these panels, you'll see that all the different content categories that we've created. And that came from a big brainstorming process where we just threw down all kinds of ideas onto the paper of interesting topics to talk about in the signs. And then we really narrowed those down into 10 different panels that directly relate to what is happening on the site. And so our goal in placing those signs is that, that was really strategic and that every sign that you come across, you'll be looking at information in front of you. You'll be able to look up in the park and directly see how that information is happening at play in front of you. Also wanted to make sure that all of the content was applicable to the students from all different age ranges across the street. So from elementary up to high school, any of those classroom ages could come down and be able to learn something from those signs. And now I'll talk a little bit more in depth about our style and identity of the signs. So that's kind of our logo and brand. The logo was designed by our graphic designer, Callie. She couldn't make it tonight, but she's been super instrumental in this process and came up with a really fun design that we like. So it's based off of the contours of the river and the park. It's lined with this pattern that came from a trout and also kind of plays off the sedimentation in the river. So we really like used what is happening in the park to form our logo, to form our brand. We think it's fun, it's engaging, it kind of like is a representation of how we want you to feel in the park. And then the color system, we thought a lot about. So we wanted the colors of the panels to be derived from the natural palette, but then utilize kind of pops of color to our advantage in emphasizing information on each panel. And then we thought a lot about kind of the voice reach of our signs during this process. So we, we mentioned this a little bit earlier, but every, every bit of information on these panels is meant to be understood by, by visitors of all types. So the audience is adults, kids, locals, visitors, families, anglers, birders. Like there's information for everyone to learn when they come to this park. And we just wanted it to be approachable, but very accurate and high level of information at the same time. So our next steps or where we're at right now is the signs are currently being fabricated, which is really exciting for us. We're working with a really great fabricator based out of Denver, but they have a lot of experience with signage in this valley. So they kind of understand the vibe of the Roaring Fork Valley and what we wanted to achieve here. So we're doing material samples, we're reviewing drawings with them. And then we will be working towards installing in the last two weeks of March, which is really soon. And we're really excited to see it in the ground.
I think a couple of important things as we get in the direction of implementation is the design of the signs were also intended to be, as Saber said, subtle. And so they'll be mounted on Corten or Rusty Steel kind of panels that are mounted into the ground. That's also very, very low maintenance. The panels themselves are printed on a polycarbonate plastic that's meant to be UV and vandal resistant, but they're also replaceable. And the regulatory information, so we've spent a lot of time focused on conversations and discussion here about the interpretive information, but all of the regulatory information is embedded into the sign package as well as a cohesive kind of suite of when this park is open, the expected behaviors. There's an entry kiosk that's going to be mounted to a, a vertical piece of timber that has the regulatory information in it, as well as recognizing the project partners and providing a little bit of background information about what's happening in the park. So all of that is all kind of embedded together in a cohesive system of materials. I think that's pretty much it. Oh, one more thing. The restoration part of the project, so there was big equipment in the river and everybody saw it. It was in the newspaper and it was like the, the big heavy duty part of both fixing the river and fixing the infrastructure. The restoration part of the project was largely done by hand carrying the materials in. And the same expectations have been given to the contractor for the signage. So they may, they may use battery powered tools, but we have a very narrow installation window that has to do with the closure for bald eagles. It has to do with migratory bird season. So we have less than a month of installation time and everything will be hand carried in and installed using hand tools, just like the restoration project. So similar expectations as that original project. All right. I think that, I think that kind of covers it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Saber. It's really fun to see this, like you said, kind of the icing on the cake on a really long-term project that spans multiple boards, multiple mayors, multiple town managers. You guys have been there the whole time and that's, that's awesome. So thank you for seeing it all the way through to the finish. Questions from the board or comments?
Jump in.
Sure. I think, I think it's great. I'm really just impressed all the way around with the, with the job of the whole, the whole park. I'm sort of, I was skeptical when, because I really loved that space and sort of an off the beaten path kind of thing. And, and went there frequently and on some levels I'm sorry to see that go, that element go, but also knowing that we're a growing community and there's a place and a need for, for parks and water interactivity. And I think you've really, really thread a needle here with the park itself. And then honestly, with the signage too, because that was my next, my next fear was, okay, well, we have this great park and I like how it sort of tapers off into kind of nothingness. But now we're going to get a bunch of sign, like I, when I heard, when I heard that there was a big signage package, I, my red flag went up and I've seen it done so badly everywhere else. I think I'm very sensitive to it. But, but I think you've done a great job. Couple, one, one question or suggestion, and it sounds like this is, you've got, got this taken care of, but making sure that anywhere there's a map, that the map is oriented, that the sign and the map are oriented the way you're facing. There are a couple of spots in other areas, bike trails, wherever, where this is, you're looking north, but, but south is up on the map or vice versa. And, and it renders, renders the map portion of it or any sort of wayfinding, you completely useless. So to whatever extent we can make sure that, that east is, east and west are the way we're facing, that would be, that would be super. I love the palette. I love the fact that you've basically created a syllabus here for, for, I mean, I'm sure teachers are going to go crazy about this because it's one less thing kind of to do for a day or so. Not really keen on, on logos necessarily, if not 100% necessary. I mean, if, I guess if we had a logo for every park, then maybe. That said, I could see this design language being used for all of our parks. And I don't know, you know, how that discussion goes forward, but having some consistency, just like the Park Service, you know, any, any national park you go to, you kind of have an idea of what to look for and it makes interpreting it that much easier. I would love to, to maybe look at a discussion about signage with the same language and palette, you know, going forward with our other parks. That's it. I've got a lot to say. I like that. I like it a lot.
Thanks, Ross.
You think, Colin?
Yeah.
Great. You think, Chris?
Yeah, you covered it. Bravo.
Christina?
What's the longevity on the signs? Like, are they supposed to, how long are they supposed to last before they, you know, start wearing it?
I, I think practically speaking, outside of the kind of the marketing of those materials, you get about 10 years and the signs will be, will be oriented in different directions because we're trying to get them in the, in the direction of kind of the content that they're talking about. And so some will last longer than others. The ones that are indirect sunlight probably have eight to 10 years. And then it starts to get that kind of film to it. And so they'll have posts and the Corten steel has holes in it. The plastic goes over the top and has a blind mount with a secure kind of a screw attachment. They can't just be open with a wrench. And so those can be replaced over time. I think a good example is the interpretive signs, which we did not do, but in El Park, I live in Redstone. So I'm in El Park all of the time. Those were maybe 10-ish years and they've recently been replaced with new printed signs. And it's a fairly similar technology that we're looking at. Yeah, thanks.
Erica, any questions or comments?
I know. Everything looks great.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you guys nailed it. I shared Christina's wondering about the maintenance. You know, I think we've all been to plenty of parks where the signs are old and they've got that film that you described. And so I hope that we're planning on replacing these on that cadence and keeping them up because for all the work that's gone into this. And then maybe some updates will need to be made. They'll want to change something on it or something like that. But I, I'm glad to hear that they're, the long-term maintenance is part of the plan and that you've incorporated the kind of regulatory indicators as well. I mean, right now you go down there and there's like 100 no dog signs that you have to meander through. I hope though, that that message will still be really clear because I think that's the most challenging part of this park is that a lot of people are going to want to bring their dogs to it. But it's, it's basic intent is wildlife habitat with, like you said, a light human touch. So could you just comment on that? Like, do you think we have adequate no dog signs? Once we remove all the like store bought no dog signs?
Yeah, I believe so. And so we've used iconography. So there's symbols that go on the, it's basically, it's kind of a column and it's going to be, say, eight or 10 feet in front of that, that gate. And you'll have to walk around left or right to get to the gate. And that's where the regular regulatory sign information will be. And it has the no camping, no glass bottles, no dogs, very clearly illustrated on the front of it.
Okay. Well, we'll see if that's enough because otherwise Eric will probably start putting up the, the store bought ones again. I know that that's just a real challenge in spots like this where people feel like it's a natural place to take their dogs. But that does violate the whole intent here. Okay. Anything else?
I was just going to add, I, I don't not like that logo. It just, the need for a logo in general, in this particular case. So I know that a lot of work can go into logo and I appreciate that. And, and, and maybe when I take a look at it a little closer, I'll feel, I don't want to discount anybody's good work in that respect.
All right. Yeah, Lauren.
I just wanted to mention that as soon as the mandatory wildlife closure is over with, I don't remember exactly the date that Eric and I were talking about. We are hoping to plan an event that is more of an all-day open house for grand opening in the park.
The signs are in or we have?
After the signs are in.
Yeah, that'd be great. Awesome. Well, thanks again for the presentation and for all the work that went into this and all the input that you got and everything. You could have done this a lot more simply, I'm sure, but it wouldn't have been nearly as, as great as it is. So thank you.
Agreed. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
High-res PDF. I couldn't read this anywhere, Ken.
High-res PDF. Do you have a high-res PDF? Ours is kind of like.
I couldn't re, I mean, I'd love to have a chance to look at this. Can you send the real stuff?
Yeah, I think ours are kind of screenshots or something. All right. Well, on that note, let's keep talking about water. Have some folks, go ahead and join us up here, please, our team that's here to talk water with us. And Mark's already in his usual spot, so. I see that we have a memo and a presentation. I mean, Kevin, Scott, I think it makes sense if you guys want to join us, whatever you want to do. But if you want to be part of this conversation, there's room, this is a work session. We'd love to have you. Maybe we can start with introductions and then I would actually just love to hear anybody on the board who has something. If you have a specific question that you hope gets answered tonight, I'd love to put some of those on the table first. Before we dive in, I think this is going to be a pretty long, it's a lot of information. And I want to make sure that we don't kind of get to the end and then ask our questions that could have been addressed throughout. So does anybody have a question that you want to make sure that we get answered in a work session about water? Because the main goal really is just kind of bringing us all up to speed, a shared understanding. We all know that water has a lot of impacts on our community and we want to understand our system better. But beyond that general introduction, is there anything in particular you really want to make sure that you get information about as we go through this?
I would, I would just, I think, echo what you've brought up before, which is like the sort of the question is dry summer, no water in the river, but plenty of water in our, in our ditches. Sort of like, what's the best answer to some, I feel like at various moments I've understood that and, but maybe don't still have the complete grasp that I need to of that. And then secondary, I think what it's on people's minds these days is fire. And, you know, is there a point at which we can't develop because we don't have the water to do that? Because in case there was a fire, what was the one in Denver or?
The Marshall Fire.
Paradise, whatever it was called. Yeah, but you know, that, that type of an event, like are we, are we developing ourselves out of the amount of water we would need in, in that case, or are we just fine?
Okay. Anything else? And we'll have a lot of time for discussion. I just want to make sure that the team knows like, what are we really looking for out of this?
No, well, since water law is so convoluted in many ways, it's, I think one of the big questions is to Ross's point. What's our standing? And if there are calls, what happens? Like what are, what are the various things that impact our system? And do we have things in place that respond to that? And we've talked about this before. It'd be great for everybody here.
Yeah. Anything else? Yeah, I would just build on really both of what Ross asked. Those are dead on what I think people want to know. And we as electeds feel a responsibility to be able to answer. It's like, can we keep growing? Can we build another set of condos or are we running out of water? At what point, you know, carrying capacity, those kinds of issues about the water, waters impact on growth and development. And both as from a fire perspective and just from a supply perspective. And then that question about, why don't we shut off the ditch? The river's running dry. The next person would use it, you know, all those, those discussions. So I think we'll get into a lot more than that, but it's good to hear that those are the main things on people's minds. And with that, you're the one person not on our staff. So maybe we'll start with introductions, but I think we know everybody else.
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Please, Kevin.
I, and then I'll go sit down and shut up. Great questions. There was two themes in the memo that we wrote for this. One was this is a very, very long-term look that we need to be taking when we're making decisions. And the second is these three are probably the most qualified three people that you could have in this room working for you. So if you read something in the newspaper that sounds different than what you hear tonight, what they're telling you is what you should make decisions based on.
All right. I appreciate the expertise. So Ashley, I'll, I'll put you on the spot just because we, we see Mark and Susan and Scott and Kevin all the time.
Yeah, absolutely. So Ashley Moffett with LRE Water. I've been consulting for 20 years, born and raised in Glenwood Springs. Our firm Resource Engineering was founded by Scott Pfeifer, who maybe some of you, I don't know if he was still around when some of you were on the board, founded Resource Engineering and Carbondale was one of his first clients. So we've been on the technical end, sort of teamed with the, usually get a attorney and an engineer on these things. So we've been working on the technical end since the early to mid 90s.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
With that, we'll hand it over and let you guys take it away.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just briefly, so we, we structured this, so we're going to have basically three chunks. Thankfully mine's the shortest, but, but basically Susan's going to start and give you guys what we kind of call Water Law 101. And some of it may be more basic than needed, but it goes beyond that for sure. And just to kind of get a foundation of the playing field, so to speak. And then I'll transition us a little, bring us down from the 30,000 foot level into kind of Carbondale. You know, and I, I just for way, by way of background, I think most of you know this. I've been working either as town attorney or in a backup role as like deputy town attorney on water issues for the town since like 1999. So I take it back, not quite to when Ashley's mentor, Scott, was hired by the town, but getting close to that. And so the, the history is important. And, and then lastly, the last piece of the presentation, probably where the rubber hits the road on the questions that you guys have asked so far is, is Ashley, which those really are technical issues in terms of call potential and drought management and those sorts of things. So she's going to back clean up with, I think we're the, the real critical information will come out. So that's how we structured it, but feel free to interrupt any of us anytime with questions.
Perfect. And we'll just make sure our mics are on and working. We've got a few people online. Yours are both green is good and our, the rest of ours are red is good. So.
Okay. Great.
Take note.
Well, I'm in.
I guess really quick.
Oh, Susan, did they get, because my slides came in after Susan's. I don't know what they got.
We have that. We have that and we have a memo. I think that's all we have.
Oh, okay. So I guess we can follow up with those.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, okay, great. Well, like Mark said, I'm gonna kick it off with the Water Law 101. And this is just kind of meant to be a very high-level overview of how water law works in Colorado. And the idea here is to give you context, so you understand why we have the laws in place that we do. And then hopefully Mark and Ashley can answer your more specific Carbondale questions with that background information. But like Mark said, please feel free to interrupt me if it's not making sense or you're bored to death or, you know, you want me to move it on. So I always like to start this discussion with a map, just so we can orient ourselves. And this is a graphic representation of the state of Colorado, as you can see. And what this shows is the seven major water, the seven major rivers in Colorado. And that's how the states divided. When we look at water in Colorado, we look at it by major watershed. We talk about the Colorado Water Court system, that's also divided by major watershed. There are seven divisions in Colorado. We sit here today on the Roaring Fork River, which is tributary to the Colorado River. So we're in the Colorado River Basin, which is Division Five. The South Platte River serves the Denver Metro area and that's known as Division One. So just kind of keep in mind, when we're talking about water, that's how we divide up the state. So I'm gonna move in to kind of just some really fundamental basics about Colorado water. And the first question is, what is the Colorado water rate? I think the most important thing to remember is that a water rate in Colorado is recognized as a real property rate. And that's important. What that means is you can buy and sell water separate from land. It doesn't necessarily go with land, it could go with land, but it can be separate from land and it can be bought and sold. Just the same way you can buy and sell real property. Colorado follows the doctrine of prior appropriation, which is just really a fancy legal way of saying first in time is first in rate. And so to understand what that means, we have to think about what it takes to create a water rate. So the most basic example is if you wanted to have a water rate, you could walk down to the Roaring Fork River. You could dig, hand dig a ditch, you could divert a certain amount of flow from the river and you could put it to beneficial use. Let's say you had a parcel of land near the river that you wanted to irrigate and you could apply that water to irrigation use. As long as that water was available and not needed for somebody else, that would give you a water rate. You don't need to do anything else to create a water rate. The date on which you did that, that you diverted the water and put it to beneficial use would become your priority date. I'm gonna talk in more detail about the Water Court system in a few minutes, but you don't need to go to Water Court to have a water right. If you take those two actions, you have a water right. Going to Water Court gives you the right to enforce that water rate and confirms your priority date. So once you have the priority date, you know, during a time of scarcity, let's say if you have a more senior priority, you're going to be able to divert your water and fulfill the full amount of your water rate. And during those times, the more junior priority dates have to curtail their diversions. And what that means is they have to shut off, they can't divert, because the whole system is designed to make sure seniors are satisfied during scarcity times. The important thing about this to keep in mind too, is that it's an interrelated system. So if we're looking at the Roaring Fork River, all, every single water rate decreed on the Roaring Fork River relates to every other water rate. So you can't just look at one water rate in isolation, you need to look at all the other water rates in the system. You need to understand what those priority dates are too. And so the important thing about prior appropriation is that it does create certainty when you're dealing with a scarce shared resource. That's really the benefit of that system. In Colorado, senior water rate priority dates are generally from the 1860s or earlier. I think the most senior water rate in Colorado, I want to say it's an 1850 priority date, and that's in the San Luis Valley, which is in Division Three. So the second key concept, and I'm gonna mention this a bunch tonight, because I hope, I hope this sticks in your head if nothing else does, is that water rates are based on beneficial use. And that's really the key piece of a water rate. If you don't have an actual beneficial use for the water, you can't have a water rate. And again, it's this whole idea, we see it in the Colorado Constitution, we see the Colorado Supreme Court recognize it in many different cases, is that we have the shared public resource. We know it's a scarce public resource and we know it's a valuable public resource. So we only want to recognize rights that are being put to actual beneficial use. And again, tied to this idea is that you're not allowed to hoard water rights. Sometimes you hear news articles about that. You're not allowed to speculate in water rights. And what that means is you're trying to get a water rate for, when you don't have a beneficial use at that moment for that water rate. And Colorado water law is really designed to discourage that type of activity.
And when you have a beneficial use, you don't, there's no gradation of beneficial use, it's just either is beneficial use or not, right? So you can't say one is a more beneficial use than something else.
Yeah, that, that's generally correct. You know, I think the statutes try to be really flexible and the beneficial uses that they recognize. And the idea, when the legislature enacted the statute in 1969, is that they recognized what was important to the state then may not be important to the state now in 2025. So it is kind of a, a flexible doctrine. And there's some things we know aren't beneficial uses. So I always, when I'm thinking about it, I try to define it in the negative, if that makes sense. There is a provision in the Colorado Constitution. I forget which article it's in, but it says during a time of like an extreme drought, municipal use can trump all the other uses. To my knowledge, I don't think that's ever been invoked.
Chris, I would add to that, that if you think about it in terms of the first-in-time person, right? And you mentioned the San Luis Valley water right in 1850, whatever it was. You know, they're, generally speaking, setting aside her comment about the municipal use, there is, I would say there's no hierarchy of uses, because the, these laws that we're talking about is 1969 forward, you know, are a hundred years after the original water rights were established. And the original water rights were established based on knee, like for instance, one of the other oldest water rights is a gold mining water right up Left Hand Canyon above Boulder. And, and, you know, that's what we call an industrial use. And so if we were, if it was, if the uses were ranked in hierarchy, industrial might be number one. And so anyway, it, it's sort of random whether it's industrial, domestic, agriculture, you know, all the things that formed water rights over time, they, they all generally speaking get lumped together. And the use, who can use waters determined by priority, not type of use.
And while we're talking about types of uses, I just want to mention what a consumptive use is versus a non-consumptive use. So a consumptive use kind of means what it sounds like. So that would be if you have a water rate decreed for irrigation, put that water rate on your land and the crops consume a certain portion of that water. The portion of the water consumed by the crops never returns to the stream system. And that becomes the consumptive use portion of your water rate. When you talk about non-consumptive uses, that would be water rates that are decreed to stay in the stream. Instream flow water rates are an example of that. Those can be held by the Colorado Water Conservation Board. And those are appropriated, they get a priority date, just like every other water rate in the system. But the purpose of that water rate is to maintain stream flows during certain times of year. And those are non-consumptive because they stay in the stream. And, you know, I think the idea of a consumptive, of consumptive use is important because when we talk about how do we value a water rate and where do we get that value from? That's the chunk of the water rate that gives it its value, your record of historical beneficial consumptive use. Where you go to Water Court to change a portion of your water rate for a new or different type of use. That's what the Water Court would look at and would quantify. And that would be the portion of your water rate that you can move or change to a different type of use. So I'll talk about it in a few minutes, but when we talk about how to preserve the town's water rates, that's really what we're talking about. How do we maximize the beneficial consumptive use, particularly of your senior water rates? So these are just some, I don't know, vocabulary words, key water concepts that you hear when you talk about water rates in Colorado. We've gone through most of them. I know Colin, you had a question about a call. And there's a definition here of what a call is. And I think it's kind of self-explanatory, but what, what it basically means is that you're a water user on the system, you're trying to divert water. And for whatever reason, you feel like you're not getting your full amount of water. What you would do is call your local water commissioner, although you might email them now and say, listen, I think it should be in priority, like what's going on? And what the water commissioner would do is they have a tabulation of all the water rates in their district, all the different priority dates. And they would actually take out the tabulation and, and try to figure out, okay, where do you fit in here? How much water should you be getting? What other ditches are diverting today? Should they be diverting? Are they in priority? Do I need to go out in the field and shut off other water rates? So that's kind of a, a pretty basic example of a call. And then I wanted to mention trans-mountain diversion because we haven't talked about that yet. And what that means is that you take water from one of these major river basins and you permanently remove that water from that basin. And you put the water to a beneficial use in a different basin. A, a classic example is Colorado River water being diverted through the Moffett Tunnel to the Boulder area. So that water's taken out of our basin, put in to the South Platte River Basin and used by the Front Range municipalities. The frying pan river near Basalt is also an example of that, where there's a number of trans-mountain tunnels that divert that water into the Arkansas River Basin. And that water is then used to supply Colorado Springs, Pueblo and the South Metro area. So these are just examples of consumptive use water rights in pretty common terms that you'll hear when we start talking about the town's water rights portfolio. I think they're mostly self-explanatory. I would just mention that in Colorado, groundwater is somewhat complicated and I'm not gonna go into all the different nuances of groundwater tonight. But the general rule is that you consider groundwater to be tributary to surface water, unless you can prove otherwise. So what that means is that the state recognizes that those sources are interconnected. So when you drill a well and pump from the well, you almost treat it like a surface diversion. And then the last concept I'll mention is just a conditional water rate. And so a conditional water, water rate exists to allow you the opportunity, for example, as the town, let's say you're working on a 50-year planning horizon and you know 50 years from now, you're gonna have a need for X amount of water. But today you don't have the need. But you maybe want to develop a reservoir or a wellfield based on this future need. So what you would do is go to Water Court and prove to the court that you're gonna have this future need, even though you're not gonna divert the water today. And if the court agrees with you, you would get a conditional water rate that would allow you to invest money and plan around the ability to obtain this physical water supply in the future. Conditional water rights require you to go back to the Water Court every six years to prove to the court that you're not speculating, you're not hoarding the water, that you're actually moving forward to develop that water rate. And these are just two examples of non-consumptive use water rates. We talked about the in-stream flow water rate and then a recreational in-channel diversion or a risid, sometimes referred to. And those are typically appropriated for whitewater parks in the river. Okay, I'm just gonna briefly touch on how water rates are administered in Colorado. As I mentioned, we do have a Water Court system. In Colorado, we have seven Water Courts, again, divided by major river basin. Each Water Court has a water referee and a water judge. I previously served as the water referee for the Colorado River Basin. And in that role, I was tasked with reviewing and ruling on every single application that came in front of the Water Court for the Colorado River Basin. So by statute, the referee does a factual investigation. So to do that, it would go out in the field with the water commissioner and walk the ditch or look at the well or, you know, try to figure out what's going on. And then you have to do a legal evaluation to make sure what the applicant wants to do makes sense legally. Then I would make a recommendation to the water judge. And if the water judge would agree, that would become the final decree of the Water Court. And so I mentioned the Division Engineers Office, I think briefly, but they're really kind of the technical people in each water division. They're kind of the boots on the ground, right? They're the ones you call if you're having an issue with your water rate. They're really tasked with taking what the Water Court decrees and implementing it physically in the field. The water referee in particular works very closely with the Division Engineers Office to make sure you're not writing a decree that doesn't work physically. Any questions? Okay. I'm gonna move on and talk a little bit about the value of water rates in Colorado. And as I mentioned before, because it is a property rate, it's the right that you can freely transfer to new places and different types of use. And that's a really important concept in Colorado water law. The laws are really designed to allow that flexibility. But to do that, you have to go through a Water Court process. And you basically have to go into Water Court. The court will quantify that consumptive beneficial use piece of your water rate. That will then become kind of the yield of your water rate and the chunk of the water rate that you can change to a new and different type of use. As part of that, and this I think will come up in Ashley's discussion later, when the Water Court's evaluating this, what the court's doing is looking at how you historically beneficially used the water. And that kind of links back to, we really want to recognize beneficial use because it's all interrelated, right? So if you have a water rate that you haven't used for 50 years and you come to Water Court to change it, the court's gonna say, well, you haven't had a need for it for the past 50 years, you haven't diverted it, you haven't used it. So that'll count against you and that will decrease the yield of your water rate. All of this is designed to prevent injury to other water rights users on the stream. So the goal is that the Water Court will quantify the water rate and impose terms and conditions that will allow you to change your chunk of the water rate to a new use without injuring all the existing water rights in the river system. A piece of that is the requirement of drawing up historically irrigated area, if you're talking about an irrigation water rate. And the idea there is you don't want to double dip, right? Like you can't change a water rate to municipal use here and keep using it to irrigate the same acreage that you historically did. So that's why you're required to dry up that acreage.
So where people, is 50 years is sort of where you, where the, the doubting starts to come into a, how long somebody, or is, what's the time period of?
Still, there's a process called the abandonment process. And through that process, if there's a 10-year period of non-use, it creates a presumption that you've abandoned your water rate. Now, you can come into court and say this presumption is wrong and they got it wrong, or I don't intend to abandon it. The 50-year period comes from some case law about municipalities and how, what sort of planning, growth planning periods they can use. Like what would be reasonable when you're talking about that? Well, 50 years is a hard and fast rule. I think 50 to 100 years is kind of accepted for municipal water rights planning. And again, just to remind you, beneficial consumptive use is really the key here. And this is, this is when we think about diverting water and how to manage a water rights portfolio. This is kind of what we're looking at. How can we maximize your beneficial consumptive use? Particularly for your more senior water rights, because that's really where you're gonna get the value. My next slide goes into this in more detail, but you know, when we start talking about a Colorado River compact call, and I know that kind of pops up in the media every so often. It's kind of the white elephant in the basin right now, where there's kind of this idea that there's probably gonna be a call sometime in the future. And what does that mean? You know, how will that impact water rights in Colorado? And nobody knows the answer, so I can't, I can't answer that question for you today. But what I think we're fairly certain on is for water rights with priority dates before 1922, which is the data that compact, that those will be protected because they existed before the compact existed. So as we continue this discussion, you know, I think it's advisable to focus on water rights with those priority dates before 1922. All right, I'm gonna- All right, I'm going to move on and talk about how Carbondale fits into the Colorado River Basin as a whole. And I'll start with the big picture. You're probably familiar with the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin, but these are the basins divided by the Colorado River Compact. So the Upper Basin states are in yellow and the Lower Basin states are in orange. And then the more detailed graphic is just a different representation of that. But I kind of like it because when you look at the red, kind of the cities with like the red crosshatching, those are cities that are served by Colorado River Basin water. And you can see when you look at that, most of those cities are not in the Colorado River Basin. So I think we see in Colorado kind of creates a west slope, east slope tension when we start to talk about what's going to happen if there is a compact call and who's going to stop diverting? And what does that look like? I will say about the Colorado River Compact, there's the compact itself, but then there's probably, I don't know, maybe 50 other compacts and agreements that also govern the Colorado River and all of those documents are known as the law of the river. So when we talk about it, we're not just looking at the compact itself. It's those collection of documents that you have to evaluate. I'm not going to talk about that tonight because that would be an eight-hour conversation. So this is the western slope of Colorado, just kind of zooming in more locally. And these red arrows show the major trans-mountain diversions from the Colorado River Basin. So you can see the Twin Lakes Tunnel diversion that diverts off the Roaring Fork and drops the water into the Twin Lake System. And then that water is then conveyed through a series of kind of complicated water court decrees to Aurora and kind of that southern metro area. And then they put that water to beneficial use. And then the other key one is the Moffett Tunnel, which is near Winter Park. So on this map too, when you're looking at the Colorado River, I just want to point out that there's two main water rates that drive the Colorado River and the calls on the Colorado River within the state of Colorado. And those are the Shoshone Water Rate and what we call the Cameo Water Rate. Shoshone is a non-consumptive use water rate. It's for a hydro plant in Glenwood Canyon. The Cameo Water Rate is actually a collection of several water rates that are diverted by Grand Valley Irrigators, kind of near the Cameo sign on I-70 when you're driving west towards Grand Mesa. So those two rates, when one or both are on call, that means the Colorado River Basin is on call. So when we're looking at replacing water or senior or junior priorities, the whole basin is driven by those two main rights. Ashley in particular is going to talk about what it means more locally when we're looking at the Roaring Fork and the Crystal River, but both of those rivers are still driven by the main stem of the Colorado. And then finally, this is just zoomed in a little bit more to the Roaring Fork River watershed. So you can see the Crystal River, where Carbondale sits, the confluence of the Roaring Fork and the Crystal. And then you can see the Twin Lakes Tunnel diversion on here too, in the Boosted Tunnel, which is another big trans-mountain diversion. Okay, and with that, if there's no questions, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about municipal considerations.
Great, thanks Susan.
Thanks. I was hoping we would see this.
So hoping what?
I was hoping we would see this map tonight. Do we have one that we can put on the screen or?
There's so much detail on it, I don't know about you.
Right, it won't help us, but maybe anybody on Zoom. Like I said at the beginning, I want to just kind of be a segue between Susan and Ashley here to try to zoom us in a little bit more on Carbondale colored by a little bit, you know, since I have a little bit more history with it. This map I'm sure is largely familiar to all of you as longtime residents. But you can see, if you take it, just kind of run your eyes through it, you'll see examples of virtually everything that Susan just talked about. Starting from, I guess, south to north, we have the North Nettle Creek and South Nettle Creek Collection System, which supplies the town's water plant. That's historically been the main source of municipal water for the town of Carbondale. There's an iron pipeline that runs roughly in an old railroad grade all the way north from that location into town, which creates headaches on occasion for public works with breaks and water hammers and all sorts of things. But that was really the mainstay of the town's municipal water. Between that point and where we sit now, you start to see the ditches, you know, physically the low line, then the Ella, Bolson Hall and Rockford, Carbondale. These ditches that we've highlighted on this map are the ditches in which the town either owns the ditch or at least has a portion of ownership of the ditch. There are a number of other ditches that are not shown on here, including I would note, for instance, like at the bottom of the system, there's a ditch that serves Aspen Glen that's called the Kaiser Severs Ditch, but the town doesn't have any interest in that, so it's not on here. As we keep coming down into town, the town also has groundwater sources, which include the Crystal River Wells Number One and Two, which are roughly over near RVR, in RVR almost, along 133 as you come into the south boundary of town. Off to the east there, you've got the rodeo well, that's sort of a standalone well that serves the riding arena out there on its own. It's not cross-connected to any other portions of the town's system. The Roaring Fork Well Field up there at the north end along the Roaring Fork River is now also a main source and has been a main source of the town's drinking water for a long time. Although you see a whole bunch of wells, 10 in number on this map, only three are actually drilled and in use. The other seven, or when Susan referred to, you can go get what's called a conditional water right, which means you'd like to have a water right now, but you might not build it for a while. Those are conditional water rights, so the town is under an obligation to go into water court every six years to tell the court about whether or when those additional wells will be drilled. That's a fairly routine process. And then lastly, the RICD, which is an example. Susan mentioned that there were two types of non-consumptive rights. She talked about in-stream flows that are held by the state and only by the state, but also more recently, these RICD water rights, which are held typically by towns or counties. In this case, the town, we went in and successfully achieved, again, a conditional water right for a number of potential structures that are basically in a reach of the river from just above, this is the Roaring Fork River, not the Crystal, from just above the 133 Bridge is the first structure potentially, down to just above the confluence of the Crystal River and the Roaring Fork. So in the future, if the town should choose to do so, like Basalt has already done, the water rights are in place to develop a recreational water right in that location to support kayaking, boating, that sort of thing. And I'm sure you're familiar that other, you know, west slope municipalities, lots of them have done that at this point. So that's sort of, you know, localizing what Susan was talking about with the town. Susan, could you flip back to the slide with the topics? So I just wanted to touch on a few municipal considerations here with water rights. Susan mentioned during her presentation, the 50-year planning period in response to Chris's question. That is really a unique, basically what happens, the city of Pagosa Springs went to water court and they claimed that they wanted to develop a fairly sizable amount of water for its future population, which was, you know, double, triple, quadruple, whatever Pagosa Springs is or wanted to be. And it got litigated where other water users said, hey, you know, you can't just grab water for the next 300 years. And so the water court, after a whole bunch of litigation, decided that municipalities will be governed by a 50-year planning horizon. And so if we were to go to water court tomorrow in any kind of major way to, for instance, change a water right, that's what would be measured against, would be a 50-year planning process. Which I think is reflective, it's really a balance of that you can't have an indefinite amount because that would lead you to the speculation that Susan mentioned. You're not allowed to say, we're Denver and we want to plan for 500 years. But it's also to allow a good, long ramp to do all the things that need to be done. Kevin mentioned at the beginning how long-term a process this is. And there are just lots of things that don't occur quickly or at least can't be decided quickly. You know, long-term weather patterns. And especially in the last 20 years, we all know, except for maybe this weekend, we all know what the general trend has been and that is affecting runoff. There are obviously changes in technology all the time, whether it be new water efficiency measures, new ways of applying irrigation water, new ways of accounting, which Ashley will get into. And on the Front Range, you wouldn't believe, you know, what they're doing in terms of attempting anyway to track literally every drop in or out of municipal systems. It's just, and with all the technology available, it's just the playing field's always changing. So anyway, that's the 50-year planning horizon. Resiliency and redundancy, just in a general sense, really more engineering issues than legal, although they're legal to a certain degree too, especially with climate change, but really just in general. There's just an obvious desire to what I would call have a belt and suspenders approach to municipal water planning. And you don't have to look very far to find some really good examples right here in this valley. Like for instance, when Glenwood Springs suffered the fires up No Name and Grizzly, they had to pump out of the Colorado River to get by. They do have rights to do that, but the water quality in the Colorado is inferior to their creeks, obviously, just like if we were to take it out of the Roaring Fork here compared to Nettle Creek. There's always those considerations, but it's more extreme down there. And so that, they needed to plan for that resiliency and redundancy. Looking up Valley, a good example, I don't know if you remember, but I think around 2016, in a big snow year, there was a massive avalanche up East Snowmass Creek up in the wilderness. And it took out so many aspen trees and put them in the bottom of the creek that there was actually a degradation process when all those leaves and branches started rotting, that the quality in the river, you know, snowmass, water and sand had always planned on having pristine water quality, just like Nettle Creek. And all of a sudden, the biologic issues up there were unprecedented. And so they had to wrestle that and they've since undertaken some long-term planning that could result in having a backup redundant kind of water capability to be able to divert down near the Brush Creek, Roaring Fork Confluence and bring water up the hill into Snowmass, be it avalanche, rockfall, fire, or this example I gave you with the the aspen trees up there. So it's just looking at those things. Now, when we come again, local to Carbondale, nothing's ever perfect, but Ashley may touch on this a little too, but when we were preparing for this, you know, she really said that this is the envy of a lot of small-town waters, water planning. And that's because you don't have to undertake a strategic plan. You already have some redundancy, you have existing redundancy, there could always be more. But we've got, you know, a combination of groundwater and surface water sources. We've got a high elevation source that is fed by gravity that requires very little treatment. We've got groundwater wells that are more, you know, somewhat more drought-protected. And we've got, you know, the ditches providing non-potable water use opportunities, which avoid treatment and are also gravity-fed and save some pumping costs. So if you put all those together, the chess pieces, again, nothing's ever perfect. But I know since I do work for Snowmass as well and they're looking at this Roaring Fork Plan, that this, you know, this, what we have is something that they desire. And so it's something that, you know, whoever was responsible for these decisions way back before any of us were in the room made some pretty good decisions in my estimation. So, let's see, I mentioned potable and non-potable. I know Ashley will talk more about the particularities of the ditches. But that too is a real asset. It allows us to not have peak demands driven by treated water supplies for irrigation. Another, hate to be mentioning my own, I'll say hypothetically, another up-valley system, you know, their peak is in July when everybody wants to water their lawns because they're having to put chlorinated treated water on the lawns. And so the peaking function here is affected by the availability and use of the ditches. The consumptive beneficial use, bullet point up there, Susan's really already addressed that. I guess, in addition to everything that was said, I would just add that, you know, when you go into water court, let's imagine that you have a 50 acres that was hay and you'd like to convert that water use to municipal use. As Susan said, it's the consumptive beneficial use. So the whole game is to determine how much water did that hay crop consume? And it's only what was consumed, it's not the extra that went back to the river, it's not any seepage out of the ditch. It's just how much evapotranspiration, you know, was consumed by those plants. And if you have a steady, you know, if you look at aerial photos and that that green space was watered every year, all year from May through October, your case might be pretty easy. But you're quite, I don't remember who asked the question about.
Chris.
Chris asked about the 50 years and the duration, like how long and when. The statutes today actually call for a reasonable planning period, but it's determined on a case-by-case basis. And so you'll see some cases where it's a 20-year history of use and other cases where it's 110 years. Like Susan said, it could be quite long. But all the while, you're looking through that history to see, well, did the whole amount of acres get watered? Or was it only until July? Or was it, was there a 10-year gap when it didn't get watered at all, which could get averaged in by an engineer to reduce the yield from that? And so you start with kind of a whole pie, assuming complete full irrigation, but the pie doesn't grow. It can only shrink based on all those factors. And so it's the period of use, the amount of use, the efficiency of the use, all those things create that history that becomes the consumptive beneficial use that can be used somewhere else or for some other different purpose. Last piece, which is really important and we haven't dealt with that much with this board in recent times, is water rights dedications. When municipalities like Carbondale, the best example I could give you would be RVR. You know, RVR was back in the 90s ranches. And when a developer came in and wanted to turn it into what it is now, there was a lengthy process to determine that, mostly through an annexation process. And in that process, that is the typical place where municipalities have the opportunity to grow its water rights portfolio. And so back then, that was on a case-by-case, that was just on an ad hoc basis. In annexation, it's a negotiation, the town is in position to ask for what it wants. And the town did obtain significant water rights dedications that formed the basis of some of what Ashley's map shows, including the Bolson Holland and ditch in particular and some of the town ditch. But generally speaking, since then, and I think it was in 2001, with the help of Ashley's mentor Scott Pfeifer, the town implemented a water rights dedication ordinance, which you all know about generally because we'll see a small fee charged to a developer or maybe a water right given by a developer in the context of a development approval. That is not unique to annexation. We certainly do use that in annexation, but it actually can be applied at set division, at site plan, at, really even at building primitive. It hasn't been caught previously. And it's a way for the town to not, to basically try to have development pay for itself as far as additional water supplies. That ordinance tilts towards the dedication of actual water rights. So if we see a piece of land that was watered by the Bolson Holland, probably not a good example because that's already been through RVR, but we asked for the developer to give us that water right to become part of this portfolio. And we prefer that over the developer paying a fee because the fee, Kevin can put in the checkbook and use it for water rights acquisition in the future or system infrastructure, but it's not the same as enhancing our actual raw water supply. And so the fee is at the discretion of the trustees and all those different development scenarios. It's not mandatory. If the town doesn't want, if the board doesn't want to accept money, it doesn't have to. You can just say, no developer, we really want you to go find water rights. But if we do tumble to a fee, the way it works is, under the code, each equivalent residential unit. So basically, imagine a standard 1500 square foot house that we use for planting purposes. That size house would require a dedication of 0.75 acre feet of historic consumptive use. So what Susan and I were talking about in terms of looking at that crop, we need to see three-quarters of an acre foot of water for each house. And that ordinance didn't just establish the amount in acre fee, it also attributed a fee to that. And it basically said that each acre- And it basically said that each acre foot at the time of that ordinance was valued at $3,000. So using my example, if you need 0.75 acre feet per house, each, the developer of a single family house, on average, would need to pay the town $2,250 if the board was willing to entertain a fee instead of having the actual water rights dedicated. We mentioned that just to give you perspective on how this portfolio can change, but also Ashley will talk about a little bit more detail to you. As, and this frankly happened when Scott and I did this presentation in 2017, was it 2017, 2018? We we on our do list is like, maybe we should address the water rights dedication fee. That number is very dated, for better or worse. The amount locally, as Ashley can talk to you about a little bit, is is likely quite a bit more. And and if if any of you familiar with development trends on the front range, Boulder Fort Collins, that whole area, you know, the per house dedication requirement just is exponentially more, I'm not suggesting that we'd want to demand too much, but we also may be at a point where that number, having been passed in 24 years ago, is a little bit long in the tooth. And we should, Ashley can touch on that later, that's probably more appropriate for our future conversation with Kevin's input, but just wanted to kind of set the stage for that. So that's the segue.
The segue, so now the details.
You ready?
The the nuts and bolts.
Any questions for Mark before we get on to the next, to the final segment, I think? All right, thanks, Mark.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. Yeah. Either way, yeah. I can reach over. So obviously, my slides look a lot busier, because an engineer put them together and there's a lot more detail, but I'm gonna keep it really high level. So Mark touched on, the first slide here is really a table that's outlining your municipal water right portfolio.
Just to be clear, we don't have that.
Yet.
Right, and we can't see that, so like, there's just no way that we could possibly make that visible to us, I don't think, so that's okay.
That's okay, you don't need to see anything.
Just know that we can't see that.
Perfect, that's even better. You'll be able to digest it later, so really, this is broken down into sort of two pieces, kind of highlighting the physical piece that Mark was talking about, which is the points of diversion on Nettle Creek, the Crystal River, and the Roaring Fork River. And just to kind of add on to what Mark was saying about the uniqueness, is a lot of mountain towns on the west slope, they get their water as a surface diversion, right? So straight, because a lot of places have high quality, high mountain streams. But those are suspect, as Mark was mentioning, to avalanches, fires, right? Ross, to your point, having a groundwater source of supply as predominantly what you guys have, because even though Nettle Creek is somewhat of an infiltration gallery that gets a little bit of surface, it would be quasi groundwater, and then obviously, your crystal wells and Roaring Fork wellfields are getting the benefit of some of that natural filtration through the groundwater, even though they are connected, like Susan said, to the tributary, so they're part of the water right system. You just get that sort of added resiliency from those supplies, which is pretty unique for, you know, this type of community. And then in terms of of the water rights, what you can't see is that your main water rights for the system are like vintage, your best one is 1910 with the Nettle Creek, but everything else is like the 70s. So as we were talking about with water rights in the 1850s and Colorado River late 1800s, they're relatively junior. But the water court gave us some tools to help junior water rights sort of navigate being out of priority. So we have these, the ability to put together these plans, one of the buzzwords is plan for augmentation. The town has a 1988 change case, which I don't think plan for augmentation had been defined yet at that point, it's kind of like a precursor, you guys are a little bit ahead of the game. And what that case does, piggybacking on the stuff that you have already learned about this consumptive use, is we took agricultural rights in the Bowles and Holland ditch, Carbondale ditch, and Rockford ditch, and we changed them, meaning when these subdivisions and in the town, like where this building is, used to be irrigated by the Carbondale ditch, where you have roads and sidewalks and building imprints, right? We've taken that land out of production. The crop that had been here, we quantified, doing one of those historic consumptive use analysis, to basically find out what that yield and credit is. And then we can take that credit, and we get to leverage it, we get to move it to your other points of diversion. So now, instead of the crystal well having a 1976 priority, it gets an 1886 priority, right? So so we're allowed to then give the town flexibility to take these irrigation rights and backstop all of your municipal system.
We've done that, or is that theoretical?
No, that's done.
It's done, okay.
Done, locked in in 1988. And actually, it was a pretty cool decree, because for its time, again, this is a little bit of the theme, you guys being a bit ahead of the curve of other municipalities. It was dynamic in the sense, and this sort of segues into our next slide, which is the raw water system. It's unique in the sense of a lot of times when you see these historic consumptive use analysis, they've taken like the whole field out of production, right? And we quantify everything under the ditch. Here, the town gave itself some flexibility to say, okay, when stuff gets dried up, we're going to take credit for that, and we're going to lock it into our plan. But when stuff is still being irrigated, we're going to keep irrigating it. So it's sort of the best of two worlds, you get the benefit of being able to dry it up and get that consumptive use gold. And then you also get the ability to continue to use the historic right as it had been used for irrigation on the lands that it had historically done. So that segues us to the next slide, which sort of summarizes all of your raw water system. And so then, you know, Mark touched on this, the the other benefits of this, besides the fact that you're getting to continue to use these historic rights as they had been, cost, right? They're gravity fed, you don't have treatment, because you're using the natural water, environmental benefits in the sense of you're not putting treated chemicals on, but also, there's this concept, you know, we we spent a lot of time, Susan and Mark emphasizing the consumptive part of the water right, that, you know, that's what the crop consumed and took. But there's a good portion of that, right, that returns back to the system, returns back to the Crystal River. So depending on efficiencies, like whether you're flood irrigating or sprinkler irrigating, anywhere from, say, 50 to 70, so 50 to 30% of the water could be returning back as return flows, right? And then those are timed, so it's not like an instantaneous thing. So it's like you put water on the ground, and then I think when we did the the Ella ditch change case, we we found that the return flows took six months for the for the entire supply. So you put a CFS or an acre foot on today, and it would take it six months to accrue back. I mean, the predominant amount comes in the first three months. But that really helps with that sort of late season boost and flows, right? So if irrigation is happening predominantly in July and August, then you get all this return flow coming back in August, September, October. And so that's an added benefit to the to the environment. And then what I wanted to point out on this slide, which you can't see, but most of the water rights on this list are pre 1922, right? So that goes back to that compact discussion, we were happy that these rights would still be able to continue to be used as raw water irrigation, but also as the municipal supply, which I forgot, and I guess it doesn't matter, because you can't see the slide anyways. But that just reminded me that a couple other key pieces for your your municipal system, we talked about trans basin diversions. And so there's that big trans basin project that they call it the Colorado Big Thompson, which takes water to Granby and then over to the front range. As a as a compensation or commens- commensitorium, what's my word?
Compensatory.
Compensatory for west slope water users was there's a pool in Green Mountain Reservoir, so on the Blue River, right? You've got Dillon Reservoir that you drive by on I-70, downstream of that is Green Mountain that then the Colorado. Anybody who is using water for municipal or irrigation purposes prior to 1977 gets to be part of this beneficiary pool. So up to 1.25 CFS of the town's municipal system is covered under HUP protection, as well as all of the irrigation rights. So that's a big benefit when we talk about calls on the Colorado, because you basically get water released from this Green Mountain reservoir on your behalf as a backstop to that call. And then the other key piece of your portfolio, besides the 88 K Green Mountain protection, is, gosh, it's probably been, Mark, what, is it, is it over a decade that the Rudy Reservoir water was contracted?
Gosh.
Maybe even longer?
The first piece was probably 2004 or '05, and the second piece, 2013?
Okay. So the the Bureau did a couple last calls for storage in Rudy Reservoir, and the town picked up a total of 500 acre feet. A small portion of that is tied into a little OGG plan for the Carbondale Town Well, or the Carbondale Rodeo Well. But the rest of it is there as sort of an emergency backstop for the town, and something that can be plugged into future plans, which then goes to a little bit of that theme of what is our standing in, you know, doing a 50 year planning horizon to understand your physical and legal water supply, and then marrying that up with existing legal, right? And then, should we plug that Rudy water in?
When you did the 88 thing, does that, is that a, was that a fixed in time calculation, or is it a thing that has floated with our development in terms of that percentage of the ditch right that is, as we built up, have we changed that number, or is it based on that 88 time?
Quantification of the historical use of the ditches is fixed in time, it's basically a snapshot back, and wasn't actually 88 precisely, the case number is, it was probably like 1990 or 91. But the court said, this is the amount of historical use, and that gets locked in in terms of acre feet. What is flexible, as Ashley said, is that the that that case, and it's a little unusual in today's standards, but that case says you can keep using it on your fields, or you can stop using it on your fields and run it through the crystal wells, or Nettle Creek, or the Roaring Fork, all three of them, under that much more senior priority. So in in the event of like a compact haul, that's the beauty of it, is that you're coloring these more junior wells with the priority of the senior ditches.
And, okay, and but that can be up to 100% theoretically of that.
Of the amounts determined in that case.
Uh huh, okay.
But that would be if we then shut off the ditch for residential watering of lawns and.
Yeah.
Beards around.
Urgency situation.
Right.
Well, I think that case limited it to, there was some dry up limits.
Okay.
So it wasn't, it wasn't the whole amount under the ditch. And I think when we delineated it, we've maxed out under the Carbondale ditch, and I believe the Rockford ditch, and we might still have some to go, no, Bowles and Holland and Carbondale ditch, we've maxed out, and we still have some to go on the Rockford.
And there may be still a little of the town ditch, so, so anyway, but that's, it's sort of a moving from historical irrigation to current and future municipal.
And but the ditch itself has sort of a minimum flow it needs to function, to kind of, is that calculated in that, or?
I'm not sure I totally.
Or does it not have a minimum flow it needs to function?
For the raw water piece or for the municipal piece?
For the raw water.
You just mean to be able to get water from the river to.
Yeah.
Giannetti, basically?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, as a as a physical matter, you need a, we call it carrying, you know, you need to have a certain minimum flow in the ditch in order to get it to flow all that distance, that's true. But that's not a a direct water right issue, it's it's a component of water use, but it's it's not.
Okay.
Water court decrees don't tell you that number.
Oh, okay, so that's sort of, a lot of that is not even in the water right, it's just as part of the.
It's more just a case by case experience of the irrigator, you know, in this case, public works in the way back when, the ranchers, but, you know.
Yeah, not a minimum, because there's a maximum, right? So on the table, when you get it, and you'll be able to see it clearly, it gives you the decreed amount, that's the max that you can take, and then anything under it. And typically, what you would see is like a bell shape, right? Like, as we start the irrigation, you don't need as much water, as things get hotter and the demand gets higher, it spikes, and then as we tail into the fall, diversions start to.
Okay.
Dissipate. But that is a good segue into kind of an overall look at, right? So there's the town specific raw water system, but then trying to put that in context of irrigation and agricultural water use in the lower crystal basin, right? I mean, it's it's historically what this basin has been driven by. And you can see on this ditch, we added some of the other diversions, right, like Sweet Jessup, East Mesa, the Kaiser Seaver's ditch that was mentioned, is, I think that goes over to Aspen Glen. And then just trying to put into perspective, all of the diversion use from all of these ditches, what is the town's portion of that through the ditches that were highlighted on the map? And so using just a last 20 year record, you can see where 83% is others, and the town is about 17% of the total basin diversion. So, you know, where we're taking just under 7,000 acre feet per year, everybody else is almost 40,000 acre feet per year. And then just pulled for for reference, a dry year, so 2018 was, that was the first year that we had an agricultural water right call on the Crystal River, the Ella ditch placed a call. So that was a a very dry year. You can see where the town's portion shrunk to about 13%. And then just kind of looking at it in a slightly different lens, and this graph is a little funny because it goes negative, but this, the idea of this was just then to show sort of that delta on a stream flow basis, because acre feet, right, that's a big volume over the whole year. So here, the the purple line is the avalanche, the Crystal River at avalanche gauge that's just upstream of town. And then the blue line is again, other diverters, and then the green would be the town. So sort of seeing that, like, if we look on the 20 year average, the delta sort of in the height of irrigation between July and August is about 160 CFS for other water users, and the town's then delta is about another 40 CFS. So taking 200 CFS out of the crystal, the town being 40, and other diverters being 160, so it's like a times four factor. And then again, pulled that that 2018 year, which looks super funny, because it goes way negative, because neither of these graphics take into account, like we were talking about, that return flow aspect. Because in 2018, Kevin can tell you that the Ella ditch was calling, but he was able to keep diverting at the Carbondale ditch because water was coming back into the crystal from all of the irrigation happening upstream of the town. So more just kind of a representative of trying to get that gauge on what comparatively the town is doing compared to other water users, in particular, the other irrigators in the crystal basin. And so then this gets into the the super weeds of administration and and where we stand with your water rights and what's happening. And I think as Susan started the conversation, right, you have to, you have to look at what's happening on the crystal, and then the Roaring Fork downstream of the confluence of the crystal, and then the Colorado downstream of the confluence of the Roaring Fork. And we have to take into account all of the water rights along that chain, who may be senior. So the top half of this is, we've already sort of identified, because this is part of that 88 case, was looking at trying to resolve this issue, was on Nettle Creek, you have the Cloud Ditch, which is never placed a call, but what you will be learning through this exercise is you have to prepare for the happen, not has, those non consumptive CWC minimum in stream flow rights, there's a reach above the avalanche gauge, and then from the avalanche gauge down to the confluence with the Roaring Fork River. I also put in the Ella ditch, because they placed that call in 2018. So there's always the, again, I wouldn't say threat, but there's the the probability that one of these agricultural users could place a call. Everybody has gotten along historically, but all it takes is a change in property ownership, right, and someone who gets the water rights to have a different attitude and start putting more calls on the Crystal River. And then on the Roaring Fork, there's another CWCB minimum in stream flow right. That one is less concerning, because even the town's junior municipal rights are senior to it. But if you were to develop something in the future, you would have to take that water right into consideration. And then, as Susan mentioned, there's the big cameo call on the Colorado River down into Beck Canyon that calls in. um that calls in almost every year and then for sure in dry and average years. And that call ranges basically from through the irrigation season. So then there's a little description in the middle of this slide that kind of paraphrases what I just said. And then there's this cool little matrix that is pulled from uh we developed, right? So these guys put together these amazing legal documents and then we have to translate that into a spreadsheet for compliance with the Division of Water Resources. Um so we have a whole accounting model that was developed uh probably about ten or twelve years ago. Um that basically takes everything from the eighty eight case and puts it in a spreadsheet. Um so this was one of the matrix that came out of it. And you'll just see the sort of in out thing. And I guess the message is that there's at least an in somewhere for everything, um which is good. At least for what the eighty eight case can provide. And again, that goes back to always doing these sort of refreshing master plan updates to continue to reevaluate. Are we still good? And in particular, Ross, if you bring on new development, what can you bring on in still support? Or what would you need to develop to support future development? Then there's a whole bunch of ten slides that are mainly there just to show you everything that goes into the compliance. Um so we have this daily spreadsheet model that tracks all of your water use. Kevin and his team provides us with uh all of the diversion data from all of the municipal sources as well as the raw water sources. Those get plugged into the spreadsheet with, you know, looking at the call situation. And then it turns out, yes, we're good. Um and then this we submit to the Division of Water Resources on a monthly basis to show that the town's in compliance. So you can just flip through all of those, Susan, there's.
So Ashley, is that sort of proving that we're putting our water rights to beneficial use?
That's more proving that you're in compliance with, like, you're not diverting one of these junior water rights and not having the backing to do it. So it's more of the proving that what you're physically doing, you have the legal backing to do. For part of it, but I would say that the record that we put together for the raw water use is absolutely showing that you're continuing to use those senior agricultural rights. And that would then be evidence, say, for either an abandonment case or you wouldn't make it onto the abandonment list because they would see that. And then that would also be the record that we would be using if you were going to dry up um another portion, right? If we did another change case uh to create some more consumptive use credits, it would be based on that record. Um and then my last slide kind of touches on what Mark was uh describing when he was talking about um water right dedication in Cashin Lou. Uh this slide it just pulls together. Um it tries to like, trying to figure out the value of a water right gets tricky. Um it's it's often judged on the same way you would do a property valuation, right? Like, what is the market telling you? Like, over on the front range, the market tells you that it's fifty to a hundred thousand dollars per acre foot. Um over here on the West Slope, there are a lot of large storage projects um that sort of set some of the pricing. Uh the Colorado River District has uh Wolford Mountain Reservoir. They also have water in Rudy Reservoir that they sell. Um. And I think, yeah, that would be the two most pertinent here. So what we looked at was using that type of valuation, if you went out and bought a contract for an acre foot of water from Rudy Reservoir, what would the value, the net present value of that be in thirty years? And that gets you closer to um just under, just over nine thousand, right? So in comparison to what currently you guys are charging is three thousand an acre foot, this gives you a range of what is a comparable? And I say that for maybe pricing for this cash in lieu. Um but I don't want you to walk away thinking that's the price for your historic consumptive use or your senior water rights. Like any of that pre nineteen twenty two water would be almost. There's, there's no, the the value is.
Rudy Reservoir is not pre nineteen twenty two. So we don't know for sure what will happen to Rudy in a in a compact call. Um but the other thing is that, as I just said, water rights values really, just like real estate, location, location, location. And so you have to really consider where the watershed is, what the demand is in that watershed. So goes without saying that like the San Miguel River above Telluride or Gore Creek above Vale, you're gonna see numbers that are like the front range that she just threw out. If you're uh closer to here, if you're right below uh uh the Gunnison Valley is actually an easier example because Blue Mace is a huge reservoir and you can buy water in it below it. And so the market price per acre foot in Delta and Montrose is going to be lower. Um but here, on the Roaring Fork, Rudy, unless and until the compact affects it, Rudy is a pretty good model. But these these historical consultative use credits we have are on the crystal. And there is no contract storage available on the crystal. Plus, these are compact protected. So I would say that the nine thousand number Ashley gave you is a safe floor. Um but it's probably not the actual value, particularly of like the town ditch with its seniority, um the price per acre foot would be higher.
Well, and to your point, Mark, uh location, location, location. If you guys had, i- if if we were looking and the threat was more of a call from the Crystal River, then it doesn't matter getting more contract water. You need water somewhere upstream in Crystal. And I guess I point to everything that Marble's trying to do right now to get their water rights straight. And they're having a hell of a time because there's no, there's no storage and they don't have consumptive use credits. So they're kind of in a quagmire, right? And so that's why having these senior irrigation rights is um, it's priceless.
Great. Anything else before we dive in with all of our questions?
Dive in.
Okay, thank you. That's very thorough. Um lots of detail. I do look forward to receiving an email with all that so that we can actually digest that a little bit. Um I mean, I think the the questions we we started with, let's return to those and then see what else there is. So um. How would you recommend that we respond when somebody says it's a really dry summer? Crystal's running bone dry. Why don't we stop diverting so much in the ditch? Or should we? Should we consider that? I mean, I'm not just looking for a defense of current practice, but like, really explore that with us a little bit.
Yeah, I guess I would say that you would, i- if you really want to have a meaningful impact on flows in the Crystal River, you have to get the other eighty three percent to the table. Um uh I work for the Town of Eagle and they were having issues with Brush Creek drying up. Um they had some leverage because one of the bigger developers along Brush Creek, who did the Eagle Ranch and Hay Meadows and pa- basically all of it, wanted to come in for a project. So they kind of had some leverage, but they got them to the table and they came up with a Brush Creek Watershed Management Plan that basically at certain flow levels, everybody agrees to divert less. So there's like three targets. Um but I don't think that the town itself, if you guys just said, okay, we're gonna stop running the Carbondale Ditch and town, you're you're not gonna get to irrigate your lawns. I don't think you'll see much of an impact to the crystal.
And I guess just to that, I may say, I might answer that to say it's not that simple, right? Like, the system isn't designed where you can just say, okay, we're get, we're not gonna divert our ditch water. There's no way for you to dictate that it's gonna go to the Crystal River in the way that you want it to. Because there's nothing to stop the next senior priority in line to say, oh, Carbondale's not diverting. Well, then I'm gonna divert it. And they could, and they'd be entitled to. And then they would divert it. It wouldn't really help the river and it would devalue your senior ditch water rate. That's probably more of an answer than you'd wanna give, but that, I think that's kind of the gist of it.
Is there, is there precedent though for for landowners and municipalities coming together to say, hey, it's important to us in the valley to have more water in this stream and not have it basically stop, you know, every eight years or so. And so we, town agrees to to do this at this water level or this stream flow. So do landowner X, Y, and Z. I mean, there there's precedent for something like that? Yes, no? Not, I mean, because I could see, I could see us doing that in um potentially and and everybody feeling good and better about it. Be um, I mean, I think, and this is sort of tangential, but like, it's as much, it's as much towns ditch as it is also like two P M in the middle of ninety five degree weather, throwing water in the air. And I think we all understand that is, it's someone just preserving their water right. And I think that's, that's maybe the next question is sort of this whole use it or lose it element of it. But um, but I think there's something to be said for 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 a community coming together. A mixture of a private and municipal municipal folks making it a, making a, an agreement, right? I mean, that's, that happens. Yes or no? I or no? I don't know.
I just know my one example.
Yeah.
I mean, I I think it does happen, you know, that I think there's other examples we could probably find in the state of kind of these localized watershed plans. I I I guess I think, again, though, the risk of it is is just being thoughtful and careful about how you're gonna structure it and like what water rates you're gonna include and how that's actually gonna work. And is that really gonna work both legally and physically? Um so I I I think it can be done. I certainly don't think it's a simple process to get it done.
Absolutely. And you have to think about the other question about like the push wa- I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. And then the return flow component, right? Like, I don't think you don't, it, you don't want to just say, okay, everybody stopped diverting and we let all the water run down. Um there is some great benefit to putting water on fields and having that water percolate back um late season and in the winter.
I could share a bri- brief story that in terms of this collaboration, I agree with Ashley that, you know, the pie chart shows you the town is a piece of the puzzle, but not the majority piece by any stretch. But the um in two thousand one ish, when the big drought hit, I was, you know, much younger than I am now, but still helping with the town water rights. And Larry Ballinger, uh uh Kevin's predecessor, one of his predecessors, uh asked me to join in a meeting. We all went over to CRMS in this drought because uh there was the threat of an irrigation related call on the crystal. Um and I think the town was actually one of the parties very, very short. And we all gathered in the barn and uh, you know, Crystal River Ranch was there and then East Lanix were there and the town was there. Pretty much the majority of these big water users were all gathered there. And it was like, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? And and my, best of my recollection, Tom Turnbull, who was there, just kind of said, oh, well, let me see what I can do. And he went out and changed his, what he was doing with the Ella Ditch. And that may have triggered what you've experienced in terms of continuing to divert at the town ditch. And the system, we got by and there was no call in the biggest um, the biggest drought that had been experienced since the seventies. And and but it took that sort of collaboration. And so in theory, could you, could this be done in a permanent like agreement, like a treaty? Yes, but the number of uh, the number of parties uh to bring to the table in a meaningful way and have it be, you know, mutually agreeable to everyone, it's it's a heavy lift to to get there. Um is it theoretically possible? Definitely. Does that make sense? Um it's just, and and it's all interdependent, you know, because somebody does something and it changes it here and, you know, and we own some of it, but not all of it. And so we're not, we can't control the whole. We can only control our piece.
And I I was, I can't keep my mouth shut, sorry. I I think an important thing that Mark just said was in that two thousand one situation, people that wanted to irrigate were having trouble getting the water at their head gates. That was not a talk about should we keep X number of cubic feet in the river? It was a discussion of how do we share what's there. So I I I think that's a little different.
But I mean, if everybody agreed to do that and then more, could it, could it theoretically be achieved? Yes. The other thing to note is that there is a process for an individual water right owner to uh transfer water either through lease or outright sale to the state, which can then transfer the water to um in stream flow purposes. But the state has to go through the exact same painful historic consumptive use quantification process. And there cannot be any injury to any other water. And so the state can't magically take extra water from, by way of example, the Ella Ditch Headgate to the crystal. I mean, to the Roaring Fork, because all those intervening owners, even if the town said, we'll, we'll let it happen. You know, somebody else might say, no, I I I still want my shirt. I'm not willing to let that water go by.
Okay, that was one of our big questions. I mean, I think we can come back to that. Like, if that's something that we want to prioritize as a community, I think it could be an interesting conversation. But we're hearing that it's, it's not simple. It's not something where we just flip the switch and it, you know, saves the fish. Um I think that that's kind of how people imagine that it works in those crisis moments. Um another one of our big questions was just, you know, to meet our current and future demands as we grow. Um how are we doing? And because we couldn't see all the details in these spreadsheets, I don't feel like we have a clear answer to that right now.
Well, and I don't think the spreadsheets will give you that clear answer. Um that goes back to doing uh a master plan update. I think the there was an intermediate one. There was a water rights one that was done, gosh, in the early two thousands, maybe. Um and then there was one that was focused more on the infrastructure piece. And it didn't really drive home the water rights piece. And that was probably done, maybe what, ten years ago by SGM? Um so it's probably worthwhile. We we've done some back of the envelope calculations for Kevin periodically just to sort of say, here's where we're at. But it would be something that this team here would look at the physical supply, legal supply on a fifty year projection of growth and give you guys a, here's where you're good. Here's where you're maybe not so good.
Okay. I mean, I wonder if Scott or Kevin wants to comment on just what are the trends with our water use right now? We get the weekly report. That's a number that I actually always go to and look at it. It's about half a million gallons per day. I think in winter, about a million gallons per day in summer. Um and uh you know, as we've added more um residences over the past few years, what have we seen happening um with our water use? And if we see more, it it, the the type of development we tend to see now is fairly high density, medium to high density. We're not looking at another RVR type development. I don't think in Carbondale's um near or medium or probably long term future. Um so when when you two that manage the the water system, uh look at the types of development that we're considering and approving and all that, uh what's your take on, can we handle more?
I'll, I'll take the not super technical stab at this. What I can tell you is, as we've looked at this over the years that I've been here, I have not seen a humongous change in the amount of water we produce. It it's, it's pretty steady. Despite the growth that has happened over at least the last eight years. Are there spikes? Absolutely, but that's probably driven more by holidays. Um Scott has a a good thought that might be um worth sharing. It's the relationship that exists between permanent and second homes here in this community and how that may affect why it's been pretty level.
Yeah. Yeah, and we touched on that when we, oh gosh, that was in November, I think. We kind of touched on a little bit of like where I'm trying to push to go to build our resiliency. And it's building on all the work that Ashley's done and and all the work that Mark and Susan have done um to just build up our infrastructure to take advantage of our most historical water rights. Um I would defer to everything that they've talked about so far about how that backstops us. But the infrastructure, we need to invest in it and that's what we're working on. Um the last master plan was twenty sixteen and they were still riding just on the coattails of, everything's fine. Well, I think we've just seen a lot of changes in that time, added another ten years to the, to all the lifespan of everything. Um so we're in that position where it's time to to sort of build that infrastructure and just make sure we're resilient. Um that said, to Kevin's point, I think with the amount of second homeowners we have, that's changed uh tha- that and with the water efficiency, uh density, things like that. We're not seeing a big change or increase in water consumption. Haven't trended out our total water consumption over a long range. Um but I think it's been pretty stable. And I think Ben, you you brought up that point uh in November when you were talking about it. Well, what happens if the market changes? What happens if those homes fill? That's what we need to plan for. If all those homes get filled, we gotta be able to produce that water. We need to make make sure our water rights backstop our infrastructure. So I think we're on the right path, but we gotta keep moving that way.
Just to put a number to what Kevin was saying, the last time that Scott was here in twenty eighteen, the town's average water use was just over a thousand acre feet per year. And when I looked at the last five years, it was, uh, nine hundred and seventy.
I think that's one of the things that's just worth us all continuing to educate ourselves on and, and defy like, it defies common sense a little bit cause people see buildings going up and they think more toilets and showers and all that. But the reality is it's mostly putting water on lawn. So high density development doesn't seem, in our experience, to actually increase our water use. And as you said, all the efficiencies and everything. So I think that's a win. I mean, that's a win for affordable housing and it's a win for transit oriented development and climate friendly. You know, it's, it's in line with all the things that we wanna be able to do in this community. And so it's good that it's not a, a big, uh, water doesn't seem to be the biggest limit on our growth. But it sounds like I'm hearing some consensus here that we need some updated with infrastructure plans as well as the kind of water rights and ability to deliver it planning.
And Ben, I would just add to your, your high density comment, cause I think that that then pairs well with the raw water aspect. Because when you have high density, you need parks and open space for people to get out. And so you're using the municipal piece in an economical way. And then you can leverage the raw water in an efficient way for a big, large, open space or park, um, for people to congregate.
Other questions from the board?
I guess I'd like to go back to the wildfire question that Ross brought up at the beginning. And I guess one would just be about like immediate infrastructure questions. I know there were, you know, some maybe hyperbolic reports about, you know, tanks running dry and, you know, do we have any, do we have an issue with that of like, if we had to fire encroaching on many sides, do we have issues with having enough storage to retain pressure and stuff like that?
Let me, let me take this one. You have that issue. You've always had that issue and you will continue to always have that issue. If there were more than three or four homes on fire in this town right now, regardless of whether it was a wildfire or not, we would be facing shortages. We just do not have the ability to produce the amount of water that would take to fight a wildfire.
And no municipality does. And like the reporting on that was insane. No, no, LA fires, you run five or 10 hydrants, e- everything's running dry. So.
There are ways of sucking water out of ditches.
That's what the airplanes are for.
Well, I mean, it could be useful for us if we had a, you know, vacuum cleaner, you could put in the fridge.
We have pumps.
That may have been kind of tongue in cheek, but I, I think that that would be a benefit to us that they don't have in Pacific Palace Eight.
I mean, they have the entire Pacific Ocean, but it didn't seem to, right? I mean, in all seriousness, like I, I don't know why, if we're talking about scooping water out of different sources, we don't need to figure out that whole situation, but, it is true that in moments like this, and with the Marshall Fire a few years ago, people want a sense of security that like, we're prepared. It wouldn't be that bad here. But my understanding of these, um, wind-driven urban conflagrations, like try to call them, they say they're not really wildfires. Um, at that point, that there's almost nothing anybody can do from a water supply perspective or even a firefighting.
No, I mean, you're, you're pushing all of this through a pipe of defined size. That's what drives this. If we wanna invest in six-foot diameter water mains all over town, we'd still probably run out unless we built millions and millions and millions of gallons of storage. So, I mean, the, the reality of, uh, uh, these are good checks. Uh, and don't get me wrong. I, I wish what happened in California hadn't happened, but I think it speaks more to how are we gonna protect ourselves and our families? Not staying in the house we live in, but getting the heck out of here and doing it safely. It, it's just, there's not a town in this country that could deal with what happened there or what might happen here in other communities where every hydrant in town could be wide open and nothing. It'd just be like, oh, still seventy PSI and fifteen hundred gallons a minute out of every hydrant. It just won't work.
I think there's something to be said for the fact that most of the homes we live in, in town here aren't clustered in Pinion and Juniper. There are buffers, um, that we do have the ballfields, the parks irrigated, you know, those are, they may be imperfect. And if a, the right wind hits and the wrong fire at the wrong time, maybe nothing we can do, but we're, we're not as bad off as, as the communities where you see people just building through the trees.
Well, and, and some of the irrigation that happens outside of town that plays into that eighty-seven percent creates some pretty nice buffers around this community.
Other questions? Or thoughts to start to wrap us up? It's eight o'clock. That's kind of when we, we about hit our time that we had tried to do this and, yep, Colin?
Well, I just wanna thank everybody. This is really impressive, um, the amount of detail and, and I wanna thank previous boards for working on this from the get-go and this whole change case. I don't understand it. Brilliant.
Brilliant.
Brilliant. Wow. Fantastic. I keep thinking, could we do that again? How do we, where, how can we do that again?
It would be really hard, but you can is the point.
I'm just really pleased and happy that previous boards and previous staff did it and, uh, we're the beneficiaries of it. So thank you, all of those people, if you're still around. Um, so that leads me to my suggestion that I'd love us to move forward on a plan to take advantage of all the great things we have. We're in a very enviable position, uh, on a lot of fronts. We've got the Roaring Fork, we've got the, got the Crystal. We've got, um, obviously some old infrastructure, but I'd really love to push forward on a plan that gets us some of the resiliency Scott's mentioned about, okay, one, Roaring Fork goes down, but we got the crystal. Can we do, can we keep things going or vice versa? Um, and then, uh, I know there's some ranches up and down the crystal and who knows what their futures like. And it'd be great to keep track of those and see if there's any opportunities. We had a discussion about some parcels in the Roaring Fork, uh, watershed that people talked to us about and, and if you can get water and water rights, we should try and get them and, uh, you know, protect our future and our ability to have a great lifestyle here in town. So I'm really excited about all the work that's done in the past. I think we have a great team and I'd love to have a proposal from you guys to figure out what are our next steps? And what's it gonna cost us to, you know, keep the team, uh, engaged because, uh, this is great stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Other concluding thoughts or questions?
I just echo what Colin said mostly. Thank you. Um, great to, heard it sort of a different version of it, whatever, a few years ago, but it's great to hear hear it refreshed and, and think about all these issues and, um, I think the ditch thing, um, we should, yeah, keep our eye on and, and, and I think in a lot of cases, you know, Mark might have laid out a situation of what we might find ourselves in this future is oftentimes it just does have to be that emergency situation before people come together. But I think trying to keep our relation, relationships good with our neighboring neighbors and stuff like that. And be intact, tacked with each other so that we can have another meeting in the barn if we need to and figure out where the hits can happen. In a, in a emergency situation, a lot of it is sort of theoretical and legal out until, till it actually is a drought, so.
So one, one last question. So, uh, the V caps, uh, discussion, the whole study has been really mentioned. I don't know how this fits into this, but clearly.
Just to find that, that was the vulnerabilities, climate planning exercise we did during, I think, twenty eighteen, last big drought year.
Yes.
Um, and we were looking at what does the future look like in an era of climate change and reduced water flows and all that?
So if we can just make sure that that's part of the discussion, because that's gonna probably gonna be our future and we need to prepare for it.
Yeah. So it's sounding to me like, yeah, one.
I was just gonna say, we have, um, an update on V caps coming, I believe in March.
Okay.
So.
I think Colin's right. I mean, I think the main recommendation out of that was about making our water system resilient and redundant. And I think we've, I think some of the well projects since then were, were at least partly guided by or in alignment with that. We've talked about, you know, as we prepare for, for growth and development, looking more at redundancy and efficiency rather than expanded supply, um, because we're not seeing that big increase. Um, you know, per capita is, is going down rather than up and that sort of thing. So that's all good. Um, but it sounds to me like there's kind of three potential follow-ups from this discussion. And, and one is the, uh, what Ashley's talked about, kind of the long-term future planning. That's not really infrastructure related. If I'm understanding the conversation, it's more from a water rights and availability perspective. Is that right? What you were referring to?
They can be both. Um, I just think the last version was heavier on the infrastructure and pretty light on the water rights piece.
So that's the one, the plan we did in twenty sixteen that you referred to, um, Scott, that's, that could be both. That, is that right? Like the, the ten-year, the water rights. I, I'll say as a board member in twenty sixteen, the board was very uninvolved in that process and I felt like, I don't really understand that plan that well. It'd be great with the next one for it to feel a little more like, okay, we're being brought along with that so that we really understand the decisions. I think that plan was, it felt like it was sort of presented to us as a final plan and we went, great job. And maybe that's okay. You know, we're not gonna be experts in this, so we're probably not gonna have a whole lot to contribute, but, um, you know, we have to take the, the, our planning and infrastructure and water rights into account as we make decisions in this room all the time, we and future and past boards. And so, um, it'd just be good to, to see that. Is, is it kind of a ten-year thing? Like, uh, like the rec planning process? It'd probably be a twenty sixteen. We'd wanna either start or finish? Like, what does that look like?
I believe the last master plan was ninety-six. I think they were on a twenty-year cycle before. Is that correct?
Ten years is more typical and I would agree. Let's, let's shoot to get it started in twenty sixteen, um, cause, or twenty-six, yeah. I have a target. Twenty twenty-six. Cause that was just wrapping up kind of when I started. So it was kind of toward the end of twenty sixteen, beginning in twenty seventeen. A hundred percent on board with combining these two concepts more than they were in that twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen plan. I think having the information in one place will make it easier for you guys to look at it and to make decisions. Instead of, well, let's look at the infrastructure piece in this plan and let's look at the water rights piece in this. Let's just, let's get them together, make it understandable. I'm all on board with that.
Right. That sounds like a great process to just start thinking about and preparing for, even though it's a, it's a solid year away. And then I think it sounds like there's a lot of interest. I don't know who would lead that, um, and how we could make it happen. But, um, maybe it'd just be something for another discussion, this idea of, you know, in a drought, how do we all get together and have some agreements? I mean, Bill Fales has been in the paper with some in-stream water rights dedications that are voluntary on his part. I think that's what you're referring to, Mark. But, um, just seems like something we'd wanna explore. Um, so that we have a better answer to the question than just, well, we can't, we can't really impact that problem. I think that's not a good enough answer for us anymore. I think we need a, a better answer than that. And, you know, on one end, it's like, feels like this impossible test, but on the other hand, like, that's most of the players, you know, it's not as complex as some basins. And I think we have the benefit of it's, it's this relatively small river and this relatively small valley where we know each other relatively well. And, um, it, it would cer- certainly be something the community would embrace and celebrate, um, if we could start working towards something like that. But I know that's a lot and that's a big thing and it's not exactly in anybody's job description or wheelhouse. So if we need to come back and talk about how we would spearhead that or how we would put somebody in charge of it, we're open to it.
I, I think, I, I think the first thing, and Chris hit on it, is, and Scott's doing a fantastic job. He doesn't like it when I tell him things like this in public, but.
Turn my cheeks rosy here and say.
Of maintaining and expanding on the relationships with our surrounding property owners. We have to do that. It's important that we do that. And I think that's where you start building that trust that can get you to a conversation about this. You know, we, we'll put our heads together and think a little bit more collectively about how we might accelerate that. But I think the key is to have those relationships where there's trust. If you don't trust each other, you can have all the barn meetings you want in the world and you're gonna see a lot of middle fingers.
And it was interesting to hear that the end result of that situation was not save the fish and leave the water in the river. It was get the water into each ditch, right? It was use it. Um, and I can see how people might find it easier to come together around that because there's a collective interest in everybody getting something. Um, than in leaving something in the river. So. Okay. Um, anything else for tonight?
Thank, thank you for the explanation. I feel like it's like someone trying to describe the rules of cricket. Like I'll get them eventually, but, but I should, I could repeat to you how, how, how it works again. And I think, you know, the more of it.
Hoping at least if you heard it three different ways, yeah, something resonated.
I'll, 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 I'll discuss the really, really super dumb questions with you individually.
Ross, if it makes you feel any better, I'm an engineer. I've heard this presentation three times now and I'm starting to think about.
Uh, well, there's nothing else for tonight. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Erica, for joining us remotely. I did look up to see if you had your hand raised a bunch, but I never saw it.
Nope, just listening. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank all of you. I mean, this, I know that this took, we all know that this took an incredible amount of time and energy to put together and it was very well done. So thank you.